Next item on the agenda, we'll be hearing about a new program by the YWCA called Green Dot LA. And with us this evening, I believe, are Susan Weiss and is Peter with us as well? She's not here? Peter here? All right. We're going to move on to the -- they were actually Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathryn Ryder, and I am the current Executive Director for Tri-County Mental Health Services here in Lewiston. And I am also the project lead for this grant. So while it says "Grant for Tri-County Mental Health Service," it's a collaborative. And you'll get to see who all of our partners are in just a minute. I would ask you to note that we've named our grant "Community Recovery." And you'll note the unity is in bold print because we believe it takes a community working together in a collaborative fashion to really achieve the recovery that we're hoping for. So part of our grant requirement was to develop a purpose statement for the work at hand. This is a potential four-year grant. We've just completed year one, which was a planning grant. We're in year two, which is both a planning and a pilot initiative. And years three and four would be actual full-on implementation. The purpose statement that we crafted with all of our steering committee members reads, "To create a community response and safe pathway to recovery that provides full access, reduces stigma, and encourages the possibility of successful overall well-being and participation." So what do we know about opiates? We know that there have been an estimated 60,000 deaths from opiate overdose in America in 2016. And that translates to more than car crashes at 40,000 or gun deaths at 10,000. If you look at the trajectory for overdose deaths in the state of Maine, you can see that it's not a pretty picture. And that it has steadily grown over the years from 1997 to when this last data point was collected in 2016. Also of significant concern is the number of drug-affected babies that are being born. And you can see that that number has grown steadily as well. Though my understanding is the last data point that was collected showed a slight decline for 2016. So the good news is hopefully that some of the work that has begun is turning that trend in the other direction. So who are our team members? Tri-County Mental Health is, as I've said, identified as project lead. And we have about half a dozen of our staff that are actively engaged in leading subcommittees and key aspects of the project. St. Mary's Regional Medical Center is demonstrating clinical leadership. And Dr. Med Kelly, for those of you who may know him, is actually lead clinical advisor on this project along with Paul Rulo, who is the Director of Behavioral Health Services there. We have our good colleagues at the Lewiston Police Department and Auburn Police Department at the table. And I will tell you, this has been one of the most enlightening aspects of the grant work for me, is seeing their incredible commitment and passion about making sure that there is a pathway for individuals in our community to move towards recovery. And they see lots in our communities, boots on the ground. And when they first started coming to the steering committee meetings, I dare say they did not have a lot of hope. And over the time that we've been working together, I think Lieutenant Harrington is sitting behind me this evening. He's one of our steering committee members. And I dare say that he would probably tell you that there is a candle of hope that's now glowing fairly brightly. Community Concepts is a part of our steering committee. And they sit at the table to represent many of the social determinants that will be key for the individuals that we'll be working with. And that includes housing, economic development, and social services. United Ambulance through their community paramedicine program is part of our collaborative Bates College. Interestingly, some folks may say, "Well, why Bates College?" And there's a number of different reasons to include that we currently have six student interns working on different aspects of the project. And their energy and their talent has been key to some of the movement that we're making.
Have a question real quick?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you. But I know she had United Ambulance. How about Auburn's EMS?
Interesting that you should ask that. I was just talking to Lieutenant Harrington about that. When we first wrote the grant, we had a very, very short timeline to put it together. And we had been working actively with United Ambulance at that time. And I was not aware that there was a distinct paramedic program through the Auburn Fire Department. So I've just had a great lesson in all of that this evening. And so we will continue that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Healthy Andrews Coggin is at the table. They bring planning, community action, education, and advocacy. Andrews Coggin County Jail, we have Jail Administrator Jeff Schut at the table. Central Maine Healthcare, Dr. Bethany Picker out of the family residency. And Dr. Dervola McCann, who is heading Population Health at Central Maine. The Maine Alliance for Addiction Recovery. And this is a statewide recovery community organization. These are people with lived experience from substance use disorder who are now in a good phase of recovery and seeking to assist others in their journey to recovery. Andrews Coggin Home Care and Hospice. And the Andrews Coggin County Sheriff's Department. So Eric Sampson sits at the steering committee table as well. So what are our goals within this grant? We want to be able to increase access to treatment for those who live with opiate addiction. Create a better flow between all aspects of treatment and community resources. No wrong door. So no matter where someone turns up, we'll be able to say, "Yes, we can help." We'll share best practice across systems of care. So as you might imagine, different healthcare providers have different policies and procedures and protocols and practices. Our goal is to create consistency so that no matter where somebody turns up, the service delivery will look very similar. Support recovery with wraparound supports. And for those of you who don't know what wraparound supports are, it's all of the pieces that sit outside of the medical care. So it's housing, it's employment. It's an opportunity to contribute to the community, to be able to work successfully with families of origin, et cetera. Better coordination of care because when we talk to each other, we achieve better outcomes. Much of the regulation around the work that we do has siloed us for many years, both in terms of funding and in terms of the regulation and the way we're required to do our work. So we need to break down those silos and be able to have better flow of communication. And I'll talk about how we'll achieve that in just a moment. Reducing stigma. I'm sure you're well aware that when we talk about the population of individuals who live with opiate use disorder, it's not as appealing to some folks as children with special needs as an example. And so we'll have to do a lot of public education and stigma busting in order to be able to move many of these initiatives forward. And then the restoring of hope. Many of the people that we come into contact with have lost hope. And they are not certain that recovery is possible. We know that it is. And so we will continue to hold that candle of hope for them until they can take it back themselves. What's our plan? So one of the key components of the work that we're doing is the development of a universal release. And if you think about the different individuals that are sitting at the table as steering committee members, we all live under different sets of regulations that dictate what information we can share and how we share it. Law enforcement has their own set of regulations. Bates College lives under FERPA. Those of us in the medical world have to comply with 42 CFR and HIPAA. And I know these may be things that you're not all familiar with. But I can assure you that they are complex and that they create barriers to being able to share information across different systems of care. And when you're working with folks with significant complexity, the less information you're able to share, the less likely you are to be able to have forward movement and achieve recovery outcomes. So we hired as part of our grant a stateside and nationally-recognized healthcare attorney who has been working with one of his staff. And they have been researching all of those different areas of regulation and combining those together to draft a universal release that will allow us to all speak to each other to address the needs of the specific individuals that we enroll within this initiative. And we've had a preliminary training on that. We will have a second training before we launch our pilot, which will probably be in early fall so that we will be prepared to use that process and to be able to start the work with the folks that we'll be serving. And I think most importantly, this is going to create the ability for us to rally around the folks with most complex issues that need to be addressed. And if you can imagine sitting at the table with law enforcement, healthcare, community resources, and being able to share freely, here are the needs of this individual. What resources do you bring to bear? And then being able to create a plan of care in that moment, that's truly exceptional. We've just recently completed a medication-assisted treatment buprenorphine training. Buprenorphine is the medical name for Suboxone, which you're probably more familiar with. And one of the things we did early on in the grant period was to survey medical providers to see if they already had that training, if they were interested in that training, if they had the training, were they using it? And what we learned is that we had very few providers for a very large population of need. And so out of the gates, Dr. Kelly worked with SAMSA, Substance Abuse Mental Health Services of America. And we scheduled for a trainer to come into town and to train some of our local providers. And so we, with the training we just recently completed, within the next year, we'd be able to create 900 additional slots for folks to be able to be served. And that training will continue because Dr. Kelly will now be able to become a trainer himself. He needs to co-facilitate one training, and then he will be certified as a trainer and can train locally. Let's see. And then out of that as well, we will create a support network. So providers who have been wavered and can prescribe Suboxone will now be able to meet with each other on a regular basis, creating a peer group and being able to offer support to each other. So we have five subcommittees that are part of the grant project. And one of them is the Community Resources Subcommittee, where we are looking specifically to what is available within Andrews Coggin County for the people that we'll be serving. It needs to be, the resource guide will need to be easily accessible and frequently updated. And it will include all of the areas that are listed here. One of our Bates students will be working with our IT department and creating a geo-mapping service that we hope will be able to be translated to a cellphone application so that if someone is on the streets and they need housing or they need medical attention, they can use that website and be able to locate within our community where they can go and how to access those services. We have a Recovery Community Subcommittee. This is comprised of individuals who have lived with a substance use disorder, are now in recovery, and are living the life that they had hoped to be living. And they are ready to coach other folks as they move forward. It's not unlike the AA model that you may well be familiar with, where folks who've achieved sobriety become sponsors for individuals who are newly engaging in AA meetings. And we are discovering that their gifts and their talents for informing us in terms of our use of language, what we need to know about what does it mean to be in the early phase of recovery and as you move through, has been invaluable. And so our goal will ultimately be to have these recovery coaches in the emergency departments in our clinics and providing support across the community. We have a Law Enforcement Subcommittee. And Lieutenant Harrington sits on that committee along with Joe Philopon and Sergeant Sanloren from Lewiston PD, Jeff Schut from Andrews Coggin County Jail, and Eric Sampson, our county sheriff for Andrews Coggin. And there they talk about where the rubber hits the road and what are the needs of this community in real time and how can we address those. And they've come up with some really interesting feedback regarding programs in other states. The HOPE Program you may be familiar with, or the Perry Program in Massachusetts, where they have philanthropic organizations that offer funding resources to people who need beds and treatment. And so they bring all of that forward and then talk about what the real needs in this community are as well. So this is a very, very high-level, 30-minute overview, if you will, of a grant that is probably as complex as anything I've ever worked on. I've been employed at the agency for 26 years. I have project-led many, many grants. And I will tell you that this one is like wrapping your arms around a sequoia tree. But likewise, I am invigorated with the work at hand. I have never seen a community rise up with as much energy and commitment in a response to what is truly a crisis for our friends and neighbors. And I can tell you that I am proud and humbled to be leading this initiative and hopeful for our future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Looking to the council, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Kathryn. This is incredibly impressive what you're doing. I understand how complex it is. I think even just establishing a universal release is a huge thing that you've already accomplished. And I wonder from Lieutenant Harrington, what changed your mind about this actually being able to be workable?
When you bring everyone together, I think that that's, we look at it from a law enforcement perspective specifically. But when you bring all of these other organizations together and they're willing to look at it as a whole and understanding that it's not just a law enforcement problem, it's a public health problem. I think that's really...
Would you come to the microphone for the benefit of the public audience? Thank you. Great response. We'd like to hear it.
Sorry. Working with everyone and all the different organizations that maybe we don't get a chance to work with every day when we just see things in our own silo, our own perspective from the law enforcement perspective. But this is so much bigger than that. It's a social health problem, and we need to look at it as a social health problem and not a purely enforcement. So, and just working with these folks, it's an eye-opener that there's, there's hope.
Thank you. That's really wonderful to hear. Just, I'm very impressed.
Anyone else? Council for you?
Sorry. Madam Mayor, substitute mayor, manager, thank you. Are you entertaining referrals as well? I mean, where are you beginning? How does one who needs that help may not know where to go? How do they begin? What's their first step?
That's a great question. And I can tell you that services are happening already outside of this grant project. And we're coupling things together and working together as community providers already. This initiative will be very specific. And we'll start small in the fall because we want to make sure that the universal release works. This is actually receiving national recognition at this point, the universal release. So if it works and we can vet it and show that, it has tremendous potential to change the future of the way we do our work. So we'll start with probably about a half a dozen folks that we'll identify within the steering committee membership. So as an example, if Lieutenant Harrington is out on the streets and something were to happen and he were to speak with someone and say, "Might you be interested in this opportunity?" There's a very, very quick screening. It's less than a page. And then the universal release, which lists all of the members that I just had up on the board, they cannot cross anyone off. If they are unwilling to have all of us working with them, then they would not be appropriate for this particular initiative. And what we're trying to do is to show that when you break down all the silos between all of these different community entities, we can achieve great things together. And so, you know, it's going to be a fairly slow process in this coming year. Not to say that we won't be serving other people in the services that we already have. But in the third year of the grant, would, let's see, we are starting April 1st is second year. So by April 1st of 19, we'll be ready to really open that up and let the community know exactly how to make referrals.
Well, I've found in my lifetime, slow but steady wins the race. So you start with successes at a small scale. And that starts to, the word gets out, and then it expands from there. And then you have, you know, the clientele. The last follow-up is the publicity for this. How is it going to get out there so people know this is here? And this is what you need to do if you know someone or if you know yourself?
That's a great question. And I will tell you that we have been speaking with the media. I've been in front of the Lewiston City Council. I'm here tonight. I will be going hopefully in front of the county commissioners. We'll be holding a community forum for the greater Lewiston, Auburn, Andrews Coggin County region. And we're still working on identifying a venue. But we're looking at somewhere in the first two weeks of June, we'll have a panel that will be partly made up of the steering committee members that I've mentioned to include folks that are in recovery that can talk about... Steering Committee members that I've mentioned, to include folks that are in recovery, that can talk about their personal journey. And we will have the media there that day. So, we'll do a fairly big splash to let folks know we're coming.
Thank you very much for this tremendous undertaking.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Titus?
Thank you very much. I'm really excited to see stuff moving forward in this particular subject. It's something that's bothered me since I've been a counselor. But I did have a couple of questions. One of them, I didn't see anything here that dealt with the supply side and the issue there. I know that's a huge part of the easy access and the kind of thing that you need to work on, I think, to curtail this thing, because it seems like it's coming from all directions. And then, the other item is, I know that one of the biggest things in the news was availability of funding for treatment, because I think all this all leads to treatment. And what's going to happen if we get this all going, and all of a sudden, there's that huge roadblock where you've got all these people waiting for treatment and don't get it? So, those two things, please.
Those are two really great questions. The supply side is not a part of our grant. Our grant is really focused on resources and treatment, and we know that there have been ample funds that have gone to law enforcement and DEA, and we're hoping, and we certainly talk with those folks, and I'm privy to the opiate task force work as well. So, we know that there's good movement happening there. On the treatment side, very much a worry point. There have not been a significant amount of dollars that have trickled down for treatment. And as we write each grant, and I'll just, to let you know, we have three other grants that we're pursuing, one federal, two state side, that will continue to bring funds into service communities of Western Maine. And they all ask for sustainability. So, that's a question that I have to tackle each and every time. One of the things that we're aware of is that Medicaid expansion did pass. We don't anticipate that that will be implemented in the immediate future, but we are anticipating by July of next year that it will be in place, and that many of the folks that we are currently serving that are uninsured would be insured and would have access to needed treatment at that time. In the meantime, we will cobble together what resources we have in this community, so that we all have different pots of money that we can draw from, and we are putting a budget together that will demonstrate exactly what the minimum funding requirements will be, and then we'll create a population out of that. So, it's not a simple answer. We'll continue to look for funding both in the grant world philanthropy, and also, how do we advocate stateside in policy? And one of my other hats is that I serve as the president for our State Trade Association for Behavioral Health. And so, I spend a lot of time at the legislature, and key to that is testimony around opiate service delivery.
Okay, one other question, real quick, just to see if you've heard of this. Have you ever heard of technology out there that's abuse-resistant technology being developed?
Abuse-resistant technology?
A lot of that going on, where they're trying to make an opioid-type drug that's not abusive, that it doesn't cause the addiction, but it still has the same effect? You haven't heard anything about that?
Not specifically. I mean, certainly, we're managing our prescribing practices radically differently than we used to, and you probably know the statistics that says 80% of folks who are opiate use disordered today got there by means of prescription.
Yeah.
Right? And so, you know, there is significant work that's been done stateside with the PMP, where prescriptions are limited, and we're looking at alternative courses of intervention to include cognitive behavioral therapies, which really help folks to use other techniques to manage their pain.
Very good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Did you want to make a motion for...
At this point, okay, so they're relieved now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we move, that the council move into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to MRSA, Section 405.6A.
Second. All those in favor? Motion carries, we're in executive session.
So, thanks, council members and members of the community for having myself and Susan here. I moved to Auburn in 1977. I've been a happy and enthusiastic member of the community. Since then, never thought about going anywhere else. So, and I'm thrilled to be here to talk a little bit about Green Dot, a bystander intervention program. This is our launch week, this is our first launch event. We've made a lot of progress. We grew out of a group of citizens that started meeting, actually, in my living room, concerned about instances of hostility that we were hearing about in the community a year and a half ago. The group raised money, so we would be able to provide all our workshops and trainings free of charge to the participants. The money was all raised locally, it's not grant money. We have 46 certified Green Dot instructors, like myself, and another 42 ambassadors. The instructors had a full four-day training at the library in Lewiston, and the ambassadors had a half-day training. We already have over 20 businesses that have expressed interest in having their employees participate in our program and training. And I shout out to Bangor Savings Bank, that is committed to training every one of their employees in the state of Maine. So, what is Green Dot? Green Dot is a theoretically-based and empirically-tested bystander intervention program, and it's designed to reduce what we call power-based personal violence. That's things like harassment and bullying, domestic partner violence. In short, our message is that in Lewiston, Auburn, in our communities, violence is not okay, and everyone needs to do their part to establish the culture we want to have here. So, I mentioned this power-based personal violence, it's kind of a mouthful, it's a sociology term. Green Dot is a theoretically-based and empirically-tested bystander intervention program. It's designed to reduce what we call power-based personal violence. That's things like harassment and bullying, domestic partner violence. In short, our message is that in Lewiston Auburn, in our communities, violence is not okay and everyone needs to do their part to establish the culture we want to have here. So I mentioned this power-based personal violence, it's kind of a mouthful, it's a sociology term. I don't like to use it because it confuses people. But it's things like harassment, when somebody yells a slur in a parking lot or on the street, when somebody gets somebody drunk before they take them home for a party, assaults. Most people understand that one pretty intuitively. So I'm not here to ask the council to fix this problem we have with these hateful and hurtful behaviors. That's not the way we make cultural norms and establish cultural traditions. That's something that each of us as individuals in the community has to do. And that's what Green Dot is focused on, giving us tools so as individuals, members of the community, we can establish these community norms. I'm going to be joined here in a second by Susan. So you want to quick introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Susan Weiss. I'm a community member. I live in Auburn, Maine, and I worked in the Auburn schools for over twenty years as a school counselor.
So, as I was saying, the community members, people like us, ordinary folks, are responsible for setting the norms and maintaining the norms for our community. We expect our leaders, our pastors and rabbis and teachers and policemen and government officials, to set standards and do that. But the unexpected messengers, the ordinary folks in the store and the bank, are enormously powerful when they do these things. Everybody expects the leaders to do it and when it comes from these unexpected messengers, it's much more powerful. And as Green Dot says, no one and no government can do it all, but each of us can do something. So what does that mean on the ground here in Auburn? Well, if we imagine, pretend that this map is a map of Auburn, takes a little imagination, but pretend that's Auburn, and every time somebody in our community makes a bad decision and uses their words or their actions to threaten or intimidate or harm somebody else, imagine that creates a little red dot on our map. And over time, these red dots accumulate and they kind of disrupt our culture. They result in stuff, in having a reputation and things being okay that shouldn't be. And so what do we do about that? Well, the response really has to be in some ways tied to the problem. There has to be a good relationship there. And so what we do for these red dots is green dots. And a green dot is just that moment in time when one of us, a person like me or like one of you on the council, or somebody in the audience, just uses their words or their actions to make somebody else feel safer. For example, standing next to somebody who's being harassed or offering to walk them to the parking lot, or talking to a supervisor at work if you're concerned that something's going on. And these are reactive green dots because we're reacting when we've recognized something hateful or hurtful is going on. Now, if you look at the map, you'll see also that there's lots of space with no red dot and no green dot. We're hoping that we can cover all the red dots with green dots, but there is unclaimed space. And that's important because we don't have to walk around town with a uniform and a cape like a superhero looking for a red dot and the chance to be hero and do something. We have lots of opportunities to do what we call proactive green dots, which are moments when we make an effort to demonstrate two important things, that in our community, violence is not acceptable, and that each of us is responsible for setting and signaling that norm so everybody understands that's just the way we are. These are proactive green dots. That's calling up a friend or a coworker because you're concerned that they're having a rough time, you're checking in with them, make sure they're okay. Or wearing your Green Dot t-shirt when you go to Home Depot so that somebody asks you a question, you get a chance to talk about it. And those are proactive green dots.
So, doing green dots, it's not so easy to do green dots at first. Everyone has barriers. You see something happen, maybe you feel in your gut like, ooh, that was a really mean thing to say, what should I do? And you freeze. Why? Well, maybe you feel it's none of your business, it's easier to keep on walking, I'm a little shy about this. So, lots of times, we just don't know what to do. And Green Dot gives us all a toolkit and practice with the tools so that when something happens, it doesn't feel right, we can do something. Sometimes the best way to intervene isn't right up front. Sometimes it's not confronting a situation directly. There are other ways to intervene. And the main thing is that when you intervene in a situation, you should choose one of the tools that makes you feel safe and comfortable. So the tools that Green Dot gives us, we call the three Ds, direct, delegate, and distract. A direct intervention might be, say you're walking down the street and you hear someone yell out a terrible name at someone based on their ethnicity. You might just walk with that person. A delegate Green Dot would be, say that that happens and you're walking down the street and you're not that comfortable, you don't know the person, you don't feel like going up to them, but you might report it to the local police department. If it happened in a supermarket, you might report it to the manager of the supermarket so that someone in control and power of that organization can make an intervention at some point. And then the third way is to have a distraction. Lots of times, people are angry and they want to do something which would result in an act of violence. But if you spill your coffee or honk your horn, they get distracted and that act of violence never happens. So that is the toolkit that we recommend for Green Dot in addition to the proactive green dots that Peter talked about. We are so excited that you let us come here tonight to talk to you about our program. This is our launch week. You are the first group that we've talked to about it. We have all kinds of things going on this week. So here we are. Tomorrow night, we'll be at the Lewiston City Council meeting. Wednesday, there's an hour presentation over a power lunch at the chamber. And Thursday is our walk down Lisbon Street. We'll be meeting at DeFrain Plaza, wearing our Green Dot t-shirts and walking, it'll be a little cold, I think, with some snow, maybe on top of our parkas, walking to businesses and talking to people about Green Dot and letting them know who we are and why we're here. We, after that, will be doing workshops for community groups and businesses. Peter probably told you, we already have twenty-plus businesses that have requested us to come in and present. Bangor Savings Bank is going to train every single employee of theirs in Green Dot techniques. So we're really, really excited about that and there'll be an opportunity to sign up for presentations individualized to the needs of that group, fifteen-minute, thirty-minute, or an hour presentations. Our email and Facebook addresses are up there. We have brochures to pass out to you and buttons and that also has information to contact us. So, my last thing to ask is what is your Green Dot? No one can do everything, but everyone can do one small thing. What's one small thing that you could do? You could go home and talk to someone in your household about what you heard tonight. You could put up a big Green Dot on the wall of your office so that when people walk in, they go, what's that? Or, oh, I heard about Green Dot, can you explain it to me? Or you could go on your computer and just type in harassment and read more and educate yourself about what harassment is and talk to your friends about it or put it on social media. So that's your Green Dot, that's your challenge, and thank you very much for having us. And we have a few more minutes if anyone has any questions for us or some of our members in the audience.
Thank you. Sure. Would you like to introduce your team of Green Dots that are behind you?
That'd be awesome. Each person can introduce themselves. Why don't you stand up and we'll start in the front with Susan?
Hi, I'm Susan Cooper. I live in Auburn. I worked as a nurse in this wonderful two towns and I've just been delighted to be trained as a Green Dot person.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doris Bono, Doris Bala Bono. I grew up in Lewiston and I moved to Auburn. I feel I come from LA. I worked in Auburn and in Lewiston as an educator for a number of years. I'm very excited about this program because I really think that it'll enhance our community and I hope we embrace it.
I guess I get to use the microphone, okay. I'm Sue Martin. I live in Auburn. I've lived in Auburn for about thirty-five years. I raised my kids here, I've worked here, and it just seemed like the timing was right to do something that made everybody feel safer and more comfortable. And this is a program that we found out about after some research and I am not one of the instructors, but I am really happy to be part of the support team. And I'm most impressed with the business response we've had. I mean, then the number of people we have trained as instructors and the businesses that are so interested in this because you see it happening every time you walk into a business or anywhere else, so.
My name is Scott Curry and I am recently moved to Auburn, having been, coming down from South Paris where I had a business, Christian Ridge Pottery, and I still make pots, but very small scale. And I am pretty much retired, but still active in community stuff. And this is actually an outgrowth of my former involvement with Oxford Hills Friends Meeting, which is Quaker meeting. The whole concept of bearing witness is something that Quakers have always held very important as a means of bringing a focus to confrontations and things that happen in communities that arise from time to time.
I'm Linda DeSantis, a happily-retired teacher, and I'm on the periphery of this group, but I just want to say I have witnessed some incredible things. This group is composed of people who are so dedicated and motivated and they work from their heart and their head in a very cohesive way, and you should be very proud of what's happening.
Good evening, I'm Cindy Elias. I'm, I guess, one of the instigators of Green Dot. I'm part of Community of Kindness and we were the group that had this idea over a year ago. Lots of work, lots of hours, lots of research, very careful consideration of the organization that we decided to work with here, internationally recognized. Green Dot has contracts with the Air Force. They work in London. They work in tremendous number of colleges and universities throughout our country and throughout the world. So, we have got a very, very knowledgeable and experienced group of people working with us. Just because they've had their training here with us last August does not mean that they do not continue to work with us. We have monthly conference calls with them and we get a lot of support from them still. So this program has a lot underlying it. And I'd also like to point out that all our workshops will be free for any business that wants them.
Hey, everybody. I'm Blake Riley. I work at Bates College in res life and athletics. I've been doing some Green Dot workshops over time now and my favorite part about Green Dot is, a lot of us in the community, as we go about our lives, we recognize situations that give us that gut feeling and then we don't know what to do from there and we're kind of, we don't have a thought process to go through. What do I do next? How do I step in? Do I not step in and make an informed decision there and have an informed set of tools? And it seems so simple, but once you start equipping people with these tools to think about ways that they can intervene safely and effectively, it can really make a huge difference. So that's why I'm really excited about Green Dot coming to Lewiston Auburn.
Thank you.
I apologize for having come in so late, but I just, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Karen Lane, I'm from Lewiston. I'm another Green Dot trainer. I have enormous hopes for the program because I think it's practical, I think it's doable, and people who have heard the training tend to really start acting on it right away. So it really provokes imaginations and I'm glad we're doing it.
Thank you. Before I turn it to the public and to the councilors, another introduction or, no, it's not an introduction. I do want to just bring to your attention, councilors, that you do have in your backup packet a resolution. Two things can happen. The resolution can be passed or looked at at your next meeting, which would be two weeks from today. Or you can vote to suspend the rules and take action on this item and then Sue will put a resolve order on it and you can take action this evening while everybody's here. And are there any questions from the councilors and then any, had a question from a member of the public? Can you come to the microphone? Thank you.
Larry Pelletier, 129 Second Street. Having been a school board member for five years, my question is, are you working with the school departments in Lewiston Auburn? There's an awful lot of bullying that goes on there and has been going on for years and years, and that would be certainly a good place to start.
Yes, all the school departments were contacted as well as the police departments and I've been teaching anti-bullying programs in the Auburn schools for over twenty years. We've been in contact with Katie Grandin and other people in the school department. We, I don't know that we're working directly with the school department yet, Peter?
That's an excellent question, a point, but Green Dot came to our community in April before the trainings in order to do focus groups and learn about our community. They basically spent a week here doing these ten-hour days and developed a tailor-made program for our community and our needs. And the program they would do for in-school work with students would be different, would have somewhat different content and different approaches because it's a different environment. So this is aimed at adults. Now, it certainly would be available for teachers and other people who work in the school system, but it's not a program that we would be working directly with students.
And again, my knowledge is that people are spending a lot of time working with students in the schools on that concept. Cindy, did you have something to add?
You said it correctly. We had to choose students for adult content because that's the way Green Dot divides their curriculum. And we chose adults because we wanted to be working out in the community. And as Sue pointed out, when we drew people into the project and we contracted all school departments, we had over eighty people at our August workshop on the first morning and they represented a wide breadth of civic groups and social network groups in the community immigrant groups. It was really quite remarkable. A lot of people were there, so you saw that, but for those who didn't see that, it was a wide group of people. But that's the distinction that we had to decide when we contracted.
All right. Thank you, everyone. If there are no other questions, we have just a handful of minutes before the workshop is completed and we need to be back for our council meeting. Any other questions from the councilors? Councilor Lasagna?
Thank you. I'm just so impressed with the sea of green dots that I see out there and also understanding that synergy it's created when you seed individuals who are able to do this. I know it's been quite successful at Bates College and I really appreciate what you're doing and just look forward to it spreading. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, call this workshop closed and we'll be back in five minutes or so. Come back at seven oh five and we'll start the council meeting.
Thanks for your work, everybody.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the March 5th City Council meeting. At this time, I'd like to see if the council is willing to entertain a motion to establish a mayor pro tem this evening in the absence of Mayor Levac.
Madam Assistant Manager, I make a motion that we elect David Young as mayor pro tem for this evening's meeting.
Sorry. Second it.
Motion by Councilor Titus, second by Councilor Gary. Those in favor? Any opposed? So carries, and welcome on board.
If you please rise, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business, consent items. It's your pleasure.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Minutes of the last meeting. It's your pleasure.
Motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
The move and seconded, moved by Councilor Walker and seconded by Councilor Fornier. Any additions, corrections? No comments?
Just a correction to the date. It says February 26, 2017. That should read February 26, 2018.
Correct.
That's correct. I wanted to correct the right minutes. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Now, there's no recognitions, communications. Brings us down to the first open session. Anybody is welcome to come forward as long as you're discussing something that's not already on the agenda. It should be city business. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Go ahead, Ryan. You go first.
My name is Brian Carrier. I'm a resident at 32 Constellation Drive out by the airport.
I'm Ernestine Gilbert. They call me Tina, as most of you know. And I am with Brian. I live at 22 Colonial Way, and I used to be his neighbor, actually, for 25 years. And I'm here to support him with his issue. And I have a few things to say, too, but he'll go first.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I've lived at 32 Constellation Drive for 25 years. We've been an airport abutter for that time period. And in that time period, the airport is always maintained through FAA regulations, that airport buffer that protects us from light pollution, the noise, because the city, we are the last residential area budding the airport. We're noncompliant, which means that the noise out there is higher than you would normally have in a residential area. And we've always maintained that. It's an over 200-foot buffer between us and the airport land, especially now that they have the fence in. The buffer is mainly mixed-growth forest, pine trees, birch, a lot of less of that because the pines have a tendency to overgrow the area. Last Thursday, March 1st, we heard the saws in the area cutting on the airport land. We went to our back door, which was standing open, and taped to the door was a letter from the airport notifying us that they were going to start cutting the buffer down between us effective that day. I have several issues, least of all with the compliance in notifying abutters to the land. Normally, the city, I believe, requires a two- to three-week notice when dealing with land that abuts areas where they're working. And we received no notification prior to the day that they started cutting that they were going to be doing that. The second issue that I have is the fact that that buffer is there for a reason. I know that you folks have all been out there. I know a lot of you have dealt with, when Roundy lived out there. We had this issue back in 2003 when they wanted to remove the buffer. And they didn't do it because, I can't believe, I can't remember the name of the folks that did the study, but they said that the buffer that was there was sufficient to, for the noncompliant property that abuts it, which is us. We're not in an area that is an impact zone, that the FAA considers an impact zone, 60-degree turning radius over the center, end-of-runway protection zone, or crash zone, as you would have it. We're not even actually in a parallel impact area. Our neighborhood sets off of runway four. So there's no reason to remove the buffer. Now, what we were given as a reason for this is it's a timber harvest, which I understand that the airport needs money and they could, you know, they're looking to harvest the timber. But you're harvesting the timber that's my buffer. And I've spoken to the FAA, I've talked to the state DOT. There's no permitting that's been done. I've talked to the city, Eric and Mark. There was no permitting that was done through them in regards to this. There's no noise overlay due to the fact that the airport is small enough that they don't require a noise overlay in the master plan. But the fact of the matter is, we still live out there. You know, for whatever reason, we are the last vestige of a suburban residential neighborhood in an area that's been zoned as industrial. The buffer is required for us because I don't like hearing jets take off. I still hear them, but not as badly through that buffer. I spoke with the airport manager and a couple of the board members, and they say, well, they're removing the upper buffer. You know, it doesn't really provide a sound barrier. And to me, that sounds like, okay, you have a roof on this building, and they're going to take it off, and we'll take out the walls, and we'll leave you the studs to the wall, and that'll be enough of a sound barrier. It's not. It also allows in the light pollution at night. I like the little strobe out there every once in a while, but I don't want to see the airport lights all night long. And I know that this doesn't directly impact you. It's not something that you do, but the city of Auburn provides money to the airport for operations, and I think that this was done very badly, and it's leaving me in a very bad position, as well as my neighbor, Bob and Lisa Dumont, who were not even in town for the last week or so. I talked to him right before I came to this meeting. He was unaware that they were doing any cutting. And Bob actually owns the heavier growth, and if you remove trees that are eight inches in diameter and greater, we're not going to have a buffer anymore. It's going to affect my property value. And before you think that I'm anti-growth and I'm anti-airport, I've been a large proponent for the airport for years. I think it's great that there's development out there. I think we ought to develop it even more. But you need to remember that there are unfortunately still people that live out in that area, and you either need to maintain that buffer, or you need to file for an AIP and buy that area out. You're leaving us in a very bad predicament by not doing that.
I didn't know exactly what I was going to say. I have notes here. And one thing I've learned in recent years, when you're developing, there's a social conscientiousness that goes with that today. It's not like in the old days when they would come in and do things and tell you after it was done. It's just, you know, that's respect for citizens and taxpayers. And what I see wrong here, there was no 30-day public notice, and they didn't even have an opportunity to go to an airport meeting. They canceled the meetings for this month. Also, there was no one available to talk to about the airport. But I know from my past experience, talking with the airport, I never knew until I served on the council that the airport is a separate entity from the city of Auburn. They make the rules they want to make, and they change the master plan when they want to, you know. And we worked as a neighborhood to go along with them in developing. We all organized. And I read in my notes from the past, in 2017, they agreed to have a committee of people abutting the airport each side, and that we would be part of any decisions they made. And nothing happened. I went back. Why didn't it happen? I was told by the current airport manager that we can change master plans whenever we want to. So you can see how slipshod things have been operating out there. And, I mean, Brian has his problem. I've had my problems with them for years because I lived out there 45 years. I came home from work one time, they had surveyed down through the middle of my property, and they were going to take the trees on my property. They had no idea where the line was. They had no idea about buffer zones, about, you know, where the flight lines were. And if they don't know, why don't they know? Because that's what they, they need to know that. They're running an airport out there. And, I mean, Bob's heard me attend meetings before, I'm sure. He's been on that committee. David's heard me when he was our councilperson. There have been many, many, yes, he did. And he told me to run for office, and by gosh, I did. Thank you, David. But it's no way to treat people. I mean, hard-working people who pay their taxes, their children go to school here, they're good people. They don't deserve to be treated that way. No need of it. So there should have been an advisory committee of abutting neighbors. There should have been a 30-day notice. They should have been allowed to have input into what's going on. But not only that, they're breaking the federal law. That's not okay. The federal law says they cannot cut the buffer zone. And I was told to take the tops of my trees off probably seven years ago, and I said over my dead body, you take the trees, you take the house. You take the house, you pay fair property value. That's how it works in this world. So there are underhanded things that happen. I'm not going to pretend they don't at all. I'm not as nice as Brian. And it breaks my heart to see what they're doing to my neighbors out there. It breaks my heart. And I ran into additional problems when I ran for office down on Plaza Road. They allow dirty mining. People down there had no drinking water, and they believed when they went to the airport and complained that that was the right source. It is not because it never got to City Hall. They thought that they represented City Hall at the airport. So that never even got off the ground. I hope they have drinking water. I hope you'll find all health freedom because I'm concerned about them, too. But what they're doing to Brian and people on that side... But what they're doing to Brian and people on that side of the road, they might as well run the airport right through their living room, for God's sake, it's the buffer zone. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us. We'll, I'll direct city staff to check in to see what can be done with this. This is the first I'm hearing about it. What authority we have, I wouldn't know at this point, but...
According to the charter, excuse me, according to the charter, I mean, you guys provide the funds for them to be able to operate, you and the city of Lewiston. And that's the overseeing that you have, although that's a fairly substantial leverage in dealing with this. And as I said, I'm all for the development of the airport, I've never not been. I think that they ought to develop that entire area out there for what it's good for, but they need to remember that we're still out there. There's ways of, you know, removing that obstacle to them, they've not taken advantage of those. And to do this, I think, is sort of a backhanded way of going about it.
Thank you very much.
I do have one thing to add. They were going to take our homes, how many years ago, 10, 15?
15.
They came down, the new airport manager at that time brought chocolates for everybody. "Here are your chocolates, by the way, we're going to take your house." And it never happened. They never had the money. And we were kind of like, okay, we're ready, we're just ready to go. We're tired of dealing with you, but here it is, still going on, only worse than over, so.
Nice to see you both again.
It's a pleasure having you.
And I'm still your city councillor.
Yeah.
Anybody else, as long as it's not on the agenda? No? Then I close this open session. No unfinished business, we're very efficient. New business, we have some of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protemp. I make a motion that we approve order 24-030-52018, which is authorizing the submission of a pre-proposal for the NOAA Coastal Resilience Grants Program for the removal of the Littlefield Dam.
Seconded.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Do we have open, do we have public comment? No. You can?
We can.
Anybody would like to speak to this motion? Removing of a dam? No, bring it back to the council then. Any discussion? Yes, councillor.
I guess there has been earlier discussion about two, well, one lower dam for sure, Lower Barker, and there's a Upper Barker. I guess, does this have any impact on those two dams? I guess, and also, I guess in discussion of the Lower Barker particularly, there was talk about, over time, there should be some sort of a plan or be looked at as to what types of recreation, you know, maybe the city would want to see on the Little Landers Scoggin, even above the dams. And I guess, you know, by leaving this dam in place, what are the, what are the issues? Are there some problems now with the way it is? And I guess because it does involve, maybe, as we talked about it last week, it might not be money that we put in, but work in kind, but that still involves our public works particularly, and I guess, are we ready to commit that work being done as opposed to other projects that might need to be addressed?
Councillor, are you asking one of the staff a question at this point?
I guess I am.
Or are you making an objection?
Well, I guess for some clarification, the more, as I looked at the waterway, I didn't see that public has a lot of access to that stretch, and I guess I'm not sure what recreation is going on there now. And I guess because there was discussion, particularly with the Lower Barker Dam, and I know there were some questions that came up at that time as to the recreational potential for the river, so I guess, I think it would be good to have a little more clarification for the public.
All right, just a clarification on the order. This is for the pre-proposal of the grant application presentation that happened at the last meeting, but I'd like to ask Eric to come up to see how that relates to the Littlefield Dam itself.
Good evening, Mayor and city councillors. It is on the same river, obviously, as the Upper and Lower Barkers. We're well on the way to a relicensing of the Lower Barker Dam. We have looked a lot at the recreational potential of the Little Landers Scoggin River from the Barker Mill Dam downstream, and as we've worked through the licensing process, it's become clear that federal agencies are probably going to require fish passage at that dam. So this, the Lower Barker is likely to require fish passage. We've looked closely at whitewater potential, it has some potential from the dam downstream. As you start to allow fish to pass through that Lower Barker Dam, over the next year or so, we'll start a relicensing process on the Upper Barker Dam, and if it's required that we have fish passage, or the dam operator has fish passage at the Upper Barker Dam, then the next obstacle in the river is the Littlefield Dam. So one of the ideas is that if the, we have a, potentially have a federal funding opportunity, a grant, to remove the Littlefield Dam, which is not functional now and represents some hazard to the river, if it ever fully breaches during a high-water situation. If that dam's removed, then there are more benefits to fish passage and recreation as it becomes available downstream from there. Right now, we have a river access point at Hotel Road. You could put a boat, a canoe or kayak, carry in access in at Hotel Road. You could paddle downstream to the Littlefield Dam, but you would have to get out of the water and portage around that dam at this point. Removing it might allow you to paddle through that. And then the next access point would be along Broad Street. We do potentially have an opportunity along Broad Street at 741 Broad Street. I know some councillors that were here for the last council had addressed a dangerous building that existed at 741 Broad Street. We're working on settling that case and a foreclosure on that property right now that might result in the city gaining access to the Little Landers Scoggin River at that location. So that would complete, you know, a public access point that would allow people to paddle that stretch of the river, and without the Littlefield Dam there, they might not have to navigate that hazard by getting out of the river and walking around it. It probably doesn't answer all of your questions, but I think it gives a little bit of background on where the missing access points are, and I think we do have a way to start to fill in those gaps.
So the access towards New Auburn is above the Upper? So while kayaking, canoeing upstream, so there would be a stretch from the Upper Dam up to Hotel Road?
Yes, yep. You can access it now, but it's not publicly owned, but it's very close to the road, and people do use it for access. I think we have an opportunity to actually have publicly-owned access within the next few years.
Is the, I guess, early discussion indicated that the Lower Dam to be repaired and functional, there was a question whether the fish ladder would put it too expensive to, to re, you know, refurbish, and that that dam too might be taken out?
And that's still a question. We locally have some ability to influence the outcomes on recreation. We don't really locally have any ability to influence whether or not fish passage is required on that facility, and it's possible that fish passage on a small hydropower facility like that, that looks like it probably loses a little bit of money every year rather than turning a profit. That might make it ineffective to continue managing that facility, and they may choose to decommission instead.
And Upper, who controls that dam?
The same entity that controls Lower Barker. It's Kruger Energy Incorporated, K E I, and they own large and small hydropower facilities throughout Canada and the U.S. and maybe other places too, but I know they own some large facilities in Canada.
Is the Upper cost-efficient?
We haven't started that licensing process, so I haven't seen all the details on the Upper, but I'm told that it generates more power than the Lower.
So councillor, we're discussing whether to apply for a grant to remove the Littlefield Dam, and it's really not connected directly to any other dam in the process. Councillor Titus?
Same.
Objection. Objection.
Stop him.
We're...
Objection.
This is not open.
Excuse me.
I'd like to give you your approach.
Excuse me, sir. It's not, it's not time to...
I'm a citizen. I find that this program here, that this gentleman providing, has all the potential of treason.
Where...
I'm finding out with these people Friday, that these people...
Excuse me, sir. It's not the time.
Come in here...
You're about five minutes late.
...to get our money and do us wrong. I'm afraid that this program...
Welcome back.
...is so...
You're out of order.
...to be evaluated in an in-depth investigation, as I have warrants against the lawyers of the city of Auburn.
Perhaps I will give you an opportunity to speak, but not now.
Mr. Walker, I owe you a...
Please sit down.
I have a right to object. No, 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 hey, I don't work for you, John, hey? You work for me, and these people work for me. Put your hands off me. No, I'm not going up here talking, it's my right to do, okay? You're my friend, and I understand that, but if you give your evidence, it's not me, you're not a citizen, my friend, okay? I don't work for you people. You people work for the state of Maine and the people. The Constitution, like 5002, is void. Without counsel, I'm sorry, I have a right to object here. Well, that's fine, but I have, I have a right to object. ...last month. I'm sorry, you people need to know this, the state constitution is void, okay? Check out your parliamentary writing on it. I wrote it, okay? No, dear, please take your hands off me, okay? Back away from me, okay? I'm very right here, okay? I have a right to speak, okay? And if you keep thinking that you're going to beat me up, you're very wrong, okay? And you've been doing this for many years, okay? So I'm going to sit back down, and I'm going to wait for open session. You let me know when open session is, and I'll explain to you people what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Please take a seat.
...to the highest representative you walk up, and that's all I'll do, okay?
You were saying, councillor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My microphone?
I know, maybe I shouldn't shut off.
Should I shut off the microphone?
Test. Test.
Thank you. My concerns are two. One of them is, I really think that we have an opportunity here to take care of a problem that, if left unattended, could become a serious consequence down the road, and this opportunity doesn't come up very often. But what I'm really dismayed about, though, is that we have a match, and at the last meeting, we asked about in-kind services, including public service, and I was hoping tonight that we would hear something about what we might expect from public services to help offset some of this $165,000. We may still want to move forward with it because it's a worthwhile project, but again, we're going into something not knowing if we're going to get any help from anybody and what that's going to be. Because I really am behind this project, but I'm really fearful to vote yes, knowing that we're exposed for that amount of money without any indication of what the city's willing to do to match, because I think it's a worthwhile thing.
I think it could be a worthwhile thing as well. I think at this stage, we don't know exactly where the match would come from, and you're not making a commitment at this point. You would be allowing the Conservation Commission to put the idea in front of NOAA, see if it's a viable project, and also start to look for the outside match sources. Jordan Tate is the Conservation Chair person, Conservation Commission Chair person, she could add some details. But tonight really isn't a commitment other than giving them an opportunity to vet the project with NOAA and to start looking for outside funding.
I was under the impression that we had to commit in a sort of a way that if we go down this path, we can't just say, "Ah, well, we really didn't mean that." Is that not true?
Jordan could probably tell you the dates for the actual application, but it's not...
I'll permit the discussion.
So we had discussed preliminary sources from both city and outside sources where the match could come from. Bjorn Lake, that attended our Conservation Commission meeting on February 21st, suggested that we are a city that does have quite a few departments and some good talent within the city. The engineering department could provide oversight, potential surveying, but really, the details will come after if we're selected for the pre-proposal, but we are starting to align and discuss with partners, nonprofit organizations that could provide, you know, some of the natural resource delineation. We'll be contacting educational facilities that could provide some volunteering opportunities for post-removal monitoring, but again, you know, this is a submission of the pre-proposal, so those details will need to be ironed out if we're selected. It is not a commitment at this phase, so we do have some preliminary ideas where the match could come from, but those details will have to be ironed out.
Very good, then I'm, you know, 100% in favor of moving forward then, as long as, you know, we work this out. Thank you.
Any other objections or pros or cons?
Just a comment, I wanted to remind people that this is NOAA, this is NOAA's coastal, you know, grants and resilience grants, and I remember, correct me if I'm wrong, but I remember we were talking about spawning patterns of fish, and fish that may never come back if they don't get to where they need to go. So this is one of the things that's going to aid this process. I'm really totally, you know, 100%, you know, supportive of that. So we need to keep in mind that this is bigger than just taking a dam down. Thank you.
And a quick note, there has been prescribed fish passage for upstream migration at the Lower Barker Mills Dam under the authority of NOAA, and they expect to do that for the upstream as well, or for the Upper Barker Mills Dam as well, once that relicensing process happens. This would be the next barrier, so this could open up approximately five river miles all the way up to Hackett Mills Dam. So again, just echoing that this is, you know, not just an isolated situation.
Any other city councillors who'd like to comment at this time? Okay, let's go for a vote. All in favor of the motion? Seven-zero. Thank you very much. You can write your grant. Next new business.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor Protemp. I make a motion that we approve order number 25-030-52018, authorizing the sale of the tax-acquired property and city-owned property at Hackett Road, parcel ID 159-014.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, would the staff please come and describe the properties? Could that be Eric?
Or Michael.
Or Michael?
Just a brief description, because many of the properties orders that you're going to have before you will be approving the affirmation. Two of them will be recommending that the properties remain with the city, so you'll be basically voting against the motion that's before you, so I wanted some clarification so we know which motion we're voting on.
So the first parcel on the agenda is the parcel at Hackett Road, parcel ID 159-014. That in your packet is shown as being approximately seven acres. That also has an agreement with Maine DEP that part of the sales proceeds would go back to Maine DEP to reimburse them for some cleanup costs that they've already invested in the property. Staff recommends that we move forward with that sale and with that agreement. What they're asking for, we think, is reasonable compared to the amount of money that they've spent on the cleanup, and it would allow them to reuse those funds for other cleanups.
Okay, thank you. Calmly, we open to the public if they want to comment? Yes. Does anybody would like to speak for or against this? Open it to the public. Hearing none, I close the public. Bring it back to the council. All those in favor? Those against? Seven-zero. Seven zero. Passes. Next item?
The next parcel.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve order 26-030-52018, authorizing the sale of tax-acquired and city-owned property, 10 Lucille Street, parcel ID 201-093.
Second.
It's moved by councillor Titus, second by councillor Fournier. The pub, the public, want to weigh in on it? No? Bring it back to the council?
I can discuss anything.
Oh, description, okay. Eric, description?
This is a parcel at 10 Lucille Street. It's about a quarter of an acre. It is a single-family house lot. Zoning would allow the construction of a home, and staff recommend selling it, so we can hopefully get it back on the tax rolls and see a family build a home there.
Any discussion? Was something said about the city would have the right to sell it to somebody that would want to build a house there versus just having it, to sit on it for a while?
So if...
Could we make those conditions?
If the council has a preference like that, we'd like to hear that tonight, and we can, we can carry those forward. We could list it with a realtor and just let it sell to the highest bidder, or we could look for somebody that's willing to buy and build within 12 months, or some, some parameter that the council sets. These are nice house lots in good neighborhoods, but they're, they're not really key development parcels for, that would warrant like an RFP process, like we've done on some key downtown properties. So we'd be happy to put any parameters that the council wants, or the quick and easy way is to list it for the highest bidder.
What's your feeling?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I would like to see us at least for one year, put it on that we sell it to someone to build on it, not just as a neighbor.
I agree.
Is that enough for you for direction, or would you like a formal motion?
Make sure the rest won, mayor.
Is that...
Do we need to incorporate that into the motion itself, or?
It would be a bad idea.
So if you, if that's desirable, then please just make it part of the motion.
I'm, my only concern with that, Mr. Mayor Protemp, is that if we put caveats on all this stuff, we'll be sitting on it a year, two years from now. And I'm a little nervous about the whole idea of getting it back on the tax rolls, even if, you know, it's better to have taxes coming in on a vacant lot that somebody owns, somebody else owns.
It makes it harder to sell, the more conditions there are.
That's what I mean. So if we, we're gonna wait for that perfect little house to go on there, I think we're just, I think we just need to move this property out of the city-owned and into the public sector.
I have a question about that. What if we have somebody who moves in, decides to build something in a residential district, and it's not a residence, and it interferes with the, the peace of the neighborhood? I mean, I have a concern about that.
Now, we're talking about zoning, and that's totally different than what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Councillor?
I would support what councillor Walker suggested. I think that we could have a sale contingent upons, presentation of taking out a building permit, or an application for permit. I think, to me, the little bit that we'd pick up for an empty lot, to have that empty lot maybe sit for how many years, I think we're better off, especially if we have need for housing, and we have some lots that could be filled in. It would seem that, especially in some, like this neighborhood, is a...
So are you, councillor Walker, had you made a motion, amendment?
Yeah, my motion is to at, at least keep it for a year, hoping that we can make a sale for a house lot to be, you know, a house to be built there. That's my motion.
And I'm, I'm taking that. Yours, your second?
That would be a second.
Not to cut you off.
We have to vote on the change of the...
Yeah. I'll give you opportunity to, to continue for a little bit, to sell the rest of the council, and, and Mr. Walker, and then we'll vote on the amendment.
We have to vote on the change first.
Yeah, the, the amendment. Did you have any more to add?
Are you looking directly at me?
Yes, I'm looking right at you.
I mean, I, I mean, I'll offer my two cents. I just, I just think that we've got a long list here, so we'll be here all night putting caveats on every piece of property that this city wants to sell. This is just not productive.
Okay, councillor? Any more to say? Councillor Walker?
I'm all set. I, I think the motion...
Okay, we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment? One, two, three, four, five, and those against. Titus and Young. Okay, so, did you get that? Titus and Young against, and the rest in favor? Okay, so we go back as amendment?
Question, Mayor Protemp. Since we did that with this one, do we want to return to the first one and reconsider that? Change the motion to that one?
Which is... No, that's...
No, I'm, I'm sorry. No, no, my...
It's different.
Keep moving right along. Sorry. Must be getting tired.
Anybody in the public like to speak on this? Will we vote? Hearing none, back to the council. All those in favor of the motion, as amended? You see, did we all vote in favor? Seven zero?
Nope. No? Andy's against.
Andy's against, okay. Next.
Mr. Mayor Protemp, I make a motion that we approve order number 27-030-52018, authorizing the sale of tax-acquired and our city property at 73 Paul Street, parcel number 00191-057.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Description of the property?
This is also a single-family house lot, about a quarter of an acre. At 73 Paul Street, the zoning is urban residential. The lot size limits the development potential of that lot to a single-family home, but it is a nice 100 by 100 lot in a nice neighborhood. Staff recommend selling it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that it is held, again, the same as the last one, one year to sell it for a house to be built on it.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Same, same discussion as before, I take it.
Same thing.
Okay. Okay, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor?
We'll vote on the amendment first.
This is the amendment, yes.
Amendment?
See.
Five of us voted.
Five of us voted? And those against? Okay. Young and Titus against, the rest are in favor. Okay, open to the public.
Joe Gray, Sopers Mill Road. I guess I don't understand exactly, we're talking about holding it. Does that mean not putting it up for sale, or putting it up for sale only if they build a house within a year?
Putting it up for sale only if they can build a house in a year and they want to buy the property, yes.
So you're gonna put it up for sale with the stipulation that from the day they purchase it, they have one year to build a house there? That's what we're doing?
Yeah, commitment is to build a house if they buy the property. That's what I'm saying. In New Auburn, I believe you're gonna find people will want to buil, buy these lots and build a house on them.
Back to the council. Any further discussion?
Point of clarification.
Yes.
So if I understand them, Joe's, excuse me, Mr. Gray is asking if somebody has, buys the property, they only have the one year, or do they just have to say to the city and have a plan in mind, I mean, an actual plan to build the house, and they're gonna build it? They can build it and they buy it, but they, they can do it in a year and a half, two years. They're not tied to it as long as they build a house in it. Or is it they have to build that, they have to commit to building the house on the property, have everything in place in one year's time?
I don't have an answer to that question. Eric?
I doubt that we can force them to build that in a year's time, but the commitment is to try to get a house committed to be built on that piece of property.
One way that we could structure it is we could, we could set a timeframe where we're receiving proposals, and we would enter into a purchase and sales agreement with the highest bidder that commits to building a house, and they could pull their building permit prior to closing. Doesn't guarantee that some life change might not allow them to complete the home within a year, but it shows a commitment to their intention to build a house there.
I think that's the most we can ask.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor? Let me see, wait a minute, we're voting on the amended, right?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? It's five to two. Okay, next, next motion.
Mr. Mayor Protemp, I make a motion that we accept order, I mean, approve order number 28-030-52018, authorizing the sale of tax-acquired and city-owned property, 1 Gammage Avenue, parcel ID 250-310.
Mr. Cousins. Description of the property?
Second.
Oh, second.
Second.
I tried to rest this along.
You're doing well. Keep up. Good work.
So this parcel is at 1 Gammage Avenue. I have it up on the screen, right at the intersection of Hampshire and Gammage. I think the motion in this, this discussion is focused on 1 Gammage, but I just want to note that the next parcel that we'll talk about is just to the north of it, here at 5 Gammage. And then the parcel to the south is the 143 Hampshire parcel that we'll talk about afterwards. So I think it's important to note their proximity, not only to each other, but also to the park. Chestnut Street Gully, I think, is what councillor Walker referred to that section of the park as. Right now, that land is used by the neighborhood for access and also for parking. Winter Relief Parking Lot has been constructed here at 143 Hampshire. Staff at this time is recommending that we hold on to those lots, but the council certainly has the ability to choose to do something different with them. If you did decide to sell them, we would definitely recommend that you either reserve some areas for parking or, and also reserve an easement for public access to, to, to get into the park and out of the park through there.
Okay. Councillor Fournier?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protemp. I'm looking at, I, I used to live there. That was my neighborhood, was Davis Avenue, and I know where these are, 1 Gammage, 5 Gammage, and 143 Hampshire Street. I think this has some potential. You know, I, I, I think that if we approve to just sell it, just like that, then we will not have something to work with. This is close proximity of the building that's going, you know, on the Tory Street project, and I think that there might be some potential there that we may want to look at and study and make some recommendations on and come back to this later. Is that a possibility?
Well, we can do a lot of different things, so...
A lot of stuff we can do with that, and, and besides building homes there, but...
Mrs. Fournier, you have to make a motion and then see if we follow you.
Well, I think...
Make a motion at table.
I think we'd like to make a motion, but it would, would involve all three of these parcels. Is that appropriate to do that?
We're doing one at a time, actually.
Right. Okay, then I'll, I'll, what I will do is, as I move, I move that we hold on to this piece of property, parcel number 250-310, that the city hold on to it for the time being, until we further study it to see if that has potential for the city.
Well, this, this makes it a little bit cumbersome for that. Could I ask the question of the city clerk? What she recommend?
There's an order in the packet, and if you want to hold on to it, I would just vote against, rather than making any amendments or...
Thank you for the clarification.
It makes it very complicated, or you could table it.
Well, you could, you could postpone it if you, if you would like.
I could change my motion.
You could vote against the motion.
Well, we have a motion on the table.
We have a, we got a, we got a motion on the table at some point.
I retract my motion.
I would open it up to the public. I don't think I've done that yet. While you're thinking about it, I'll open up the public, see if the public wants to weigh in.
Joe Gray, Sopers Mill Road. These are not new properties. The city's had them since, for 10 years now. If there was somebody coming forward wanting to develop them, they would have come forward and wanted to develop them already. So you guys are not city planners. That's this guy's job.
Okay. Back to the council. Anybody else? No. Yes, councillor?
I agree with what's been suggested. I think there's a need to, I'm not sure how we get the motion, because we're considering three different parcels, but I guess if we need to disapprove selling all three and then come back with a motion of grouping the three to put it out for, as an RFP, because I think there's a real opportunity here.
There is.
And that is, actually, the three together would make a, a nice piece of property, and I think that it, they all should be considered, should certainly be put up for sale, but I think be considered as one larger parcel, put it out as an RFP. So I guess if...
Well said.
Any other discussion? Ready to vote?
No.
No.
Yes, councillor Walker.
That piece that you're showing there with the blue line around it, that's not the piece that Steve Martelli owned, is it?
It is, um...
Second.
The, yeah, the, the one to the north of it is the one that I believe he had an apartment building on.
Okay, that has a right-of-way already into Chestnut Street Park. And it used to be the one, it used to be the Winter Relief Park, and that's the next, next one, right?
I'm not aware of a formal right-of-way, but you can cross that now. You can, it's city-owned, and you're allowed to cross that. It's, there's a, a clear walking path through there. I don't think it's reserved in the deed, but I could research that.
Well, the, the walkway that comes from that park comes right to that edge of that land. It comes right to it.
Yes.
That would be probably the only one that I would say we need to really save. The other one can be something that we would think about, like these people are saying. I don't have a problem thinking about it, because there could be some developer to come in, I guess, or there, or maybe there's need for an overflow or something. I'm not sure, but...
As a group, those three parcels have multifamily development potential, and there may be a way through an RFP in a future round of tax credit projects to preserve the access, preserve public parking, and allow for development of a portion of the lot.
Any other councillor? Over here, yes. Lasagna, councillor?
Thank you. Young. Why are we grouping them, why would we group them together? Might they have separate uses?
So the, the, the lot at 1 Gammage, the one that is open for discussion right now, probably has development potential for a couple of units, maybe three. The one to the north, while it could allow one or two units, I don't think we'll ever find somebody willing to build on that slope. And I shouldn't say ever, but in today's market, there's cheaper, more cost-effective land to build residential units on. And the one, 143 Hampshire to the south is a paved, constructed, winter relief parking lot that was done with community development block grant funds. I don't think that one was tax-acquired. I think it was purchased and the building demolished and the parking lot constructed. There may be some strings attached to the CDVG funds that, that built that parking lot.
Thank you.
Any other councillor? Councillor Hayes?
I guess that's all the more reason, probably the three should be grouped, because if there's some, if CDVG funds were used to pave or acquire and pave the Hampshire Street property, it would seem that it'd be, there'd be more of a willingness to release whatever constraints might be on that if it was part of a larger project.
I think that's true.
Any other, for or against? Yes, councillor Titus?
I just want to bring up that, I think the point was made that these properties have been in the city for a long time. There has been no interest in doing anything with them up till now. Has it been parking? I'm not quite sure how much of it has been parking, but I guess my concern is we're now just gonna throw it back out there and nothing's gonna happen in the next five to 10 years. It's just, if we, this is... It's just, if we, this is what irritates me sometimes about, we're doing this, trying to get rid of surplus property, and every time we try to do it, we end up with these roadblocks and all these, what we could do with this property. I don't know, I haven't seen any plans. And so do we just table it or rather vote it down tonight to sell them all and then hope the next two, three years come, a plan comes up? I don't know, just a little bit.
We could certainly entertain.
We haven't had, haven't had anything in the last 10 years, so I don't know what we can expect for the future. If we're going to use it for parking, and that's what we've been using it, evidently.
And we, we had sold 1 Gammage to the owner of 5 Gammage with a commitment that he would build a multifamily home there, and then we eventually took both back for, for non-payment of taxes.
Any other discussion, Counselor Fornia?
Just wanted to make the point that I observe as we're, this council is, is working, the new councils working together, one of the things that we're, we have a goal setting is the revitalization of our city. And we may not have put the focus on these parcels, I've seen them many days of my life. But the thing is that now, if we have the focus on where can we build, how can we make this city a better place for people to live, provide more, you know, living accommodations for people, we always need that. And if we have that as a goal, and then we have assigned, you know, the planning committee, you know, assign your votes to start working on that, to see what possibilities would be, there's nothing to preclude that from happening, correct?
And with the investments the city's making in Hampshire Street, and if we start to see private investment in that neighborhood, eventually, these will become cost-effective to develop, I just, we haven't seen interest to date.
Right.
Any other comments? Ready to vote?
Yes.
We didn't amend this one, did we? No, okay, good, because if we had, I was, I was going to have it read back to me. All those in favor? Whoops.
Well, yes, exactly what are we voting on?
The original moment.
I'm sure the original motion is to sell the piece of property.
One piece.
And if we, we don't sell it, then we retain it till some future date. All those in favor?
Okay, please repeat that again, I'm a little lost, all in favor of what?
If we, if we vote, we're, we're going to be selling it. If we vote no, we'll retain it.
Are you talking about just one parcel right now?
This, this parcel. All those in favor? Those against? It is, uh, motion, uh, motion fails.
Right, motion fails.
Motion fails. We retained the property and the vote was, uh, Counselor Titus in favor and the rest of the council was, was against.
Okay, Mr. Mayor Protemp, I make a motion that we approve order number 29-030-52018, authorizing the sale of tax-acquired and city-owned property, 5 Gammage Avenue, parcel 0250-319.
Second.
Second. Description of the property.
We've talked a little about this one, it's .12 acres, it's at Gam, 5 Gammage Avenue, it's in the multifamily urban zone. This lot is smaller and steeper than the one that we just discussed, and by itself, I don't think we'll find anybody interested in developing it. But combined, someday, I think we should keep our opportunities open.
Anybody from the public would like to weigh in on this, before we vote? Hearing none, bring it back to the council. Discussion on this side. Counselor Hayes?
Well, I would certainly be voting to the negative, for the same reasons as we've previously discussed, seeing that it probably should be held and combined and put out for, as part of an RFP.
Counselor Titus?
I've said my piece, it's going to be the same one in the next order after this one too, so.
Counselor Lasagna?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
I'm fine as well.
Okay, on this side?
I'm waiting on you, buddy.
Okay.
Okay.
All those, all those in favor? Those against? That was 1, 6, against. Counselor Titus voting in the negative, uh, let me see, the positive. Next order.
Mr. Mayor, I, I make a motion that we approve order number 3003852018, authorizing the sale of tax-acquired and city-owned property at 143 Hampshire Street, parcel ID is 250-311.
Description of the property?
Second.
Oh, yeah, we need a second. You have a second?
Second.
Second. Description of the property, Mr. Cousins?
A .47 acre vacant lot. The city used CDBG funds to demolish the second building after there was a fire in, in one of the buildings. It is multifamily urban zoning. Could have potential in the future for multifamily housing, but I think staff is recommending that we hold it for now to make sure we, we think about how it's developed and preserve parking and, and access to the park as part of any future development. We recommend that you keep it for now.
Anybody from the public? No? Back to the council.
Mr. Mayor Protemp?
Yes.
I'd just like to make, you know, the point of discussion, this is a separate piece of property across the street. Why we think that if somebody would buy all three and develop one project out of these three properties, and why we think putting them all together to build one beautiful whatever is worth doing.
Is it that?
How do we see that?
Is it that triangle-shaped piece, is that the one we're talking about?
The, the highlighted piece here is the one we're talking about.
That one?
I'll click the box off, it's this oddly shaped piece here.
Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Titus?
I just want to know what we can conceive that would be, the, the two combinations of one RFP. Or what, you know.
Counselors?
I agree with Counselor Titus on this one, that we should think of it as a distinct piece of property, whatever we decide to do with it.
Counselor Hayes?
I think, well, one concern goes back to what Eric Cousins was just saying, that if this was purchased with CDBG funds and then cleared and put into pavement specifically for parking, I think there'd be less chance that we could actually sell it, you know, for another use, if that was specifically needed. I, I think that the reason for grouping is it allows for, you know, a bigger project, and I think it's an ideal location overlooking, you know, the parkland behind. It provides, even with a steep slope up Gammage Avenue, it still allows some landscaping, proper parking, and proper access. I mean, that's, uh, with the other two lots directly on Gammage, that's a little tricky at that intersection. I think the access to, to Hampshire Street would provide a, to me at least, a, an easier concept and plan and for, for development. But I think that the larger the parcel, I think if we're looking for more residential units within our downtown, this could be providing a, a bigger space to work with.
Mr. Cousins, is that true?
In, in that zoning district, you need 5,000 square feet of lot area for the first residential unit, and then you can add another residential unit for every 1,500 square feet of lot area. So, um, if you have a larger parcel or aggregate these, you can quickly add up to a pretty dense development by having a larger parcel. We could look at the development potential of this lot and pitch it as a priority for next year's tax credit competitions, if you wanted to. I think that it would be important to preserve the public access pieces of it if you ever, if you do decide to sell it. But aggregating them certainly gives you more flexibility on development potential, rather than selling them and.
Thanks to that clarification, that helps.
And is this about the other two that we talked about? No?
Yes.
Yes, it does?
Here and here. So it's these three parcels.
Oh, yeah, but ones across the street?
Ones across the street we haven't talked about tonight.
No.
But we certainly can in the future. Their potential's limited because of the steep slopes that are, that are there.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, this, the motion is to sell, right?
Yes, it is sell.
All right.
Yes means sell. And, uh, Mr. Titus is in favor. Those against? And the rest are against selling. Oh, now we're down to the next item, item eight. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor? I move on order 3103052018, authorizing the city manager to hire an additional full-time city electrician be tabled till the next city council meeting. Second.
I'll free to actually second that.
So it's been moved to table, there's no discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Young and, uh, Bob Hayes, Counselor Hayes, against, and the rest are in favor.
Tabled.
Tabled. Okay. Well, somebody needs, somebody needs to bring that up.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moving second to suspend the rules? We just, do we, is there more to that? It's usually to add something to the agenda.
By enrigoiting. To take a resolve, not on the agenda.
Still a second.
All those in favor? Spending the rules? One, two, three, four. Those against? It passes?
That actually fails because you need a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds, yep.
So we needed how many votes?
Five.
So we only had four? I'll, I'll vote in favor.
You would still need another one.
Need one more?
No, it was four, three, so. It was four, three, so. Okay, so who is opposed?
Counselors Titus and Counselor Hayes.
Counselor Titus and Hayes, okay.
This time, I'd like to make a motion that we resolve item number 02-03052018. This is recognition for the Green Dot L.A. Initiative and launch week.
Point of order, did we, did we, were we allowed to change the vote? We had to vote again, or we did? I don't, I don't get what just happened.
Okay.
We had a vote.
Well, Robert's Rules says you can, you can change your vote, right?
I don't believe there's anything in Robert's Rules that says anything about changing your vote immediately following the vote.
Would you like me to make a motion to reconsider, since I voted on the prevailing side?
Is that permitted?
That is permitted.
I, I don't believe it's necessary right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I, I will reiterate what I just said a few minutes ago. The resolve has to do with the recognition for the Green Dot L.A. Initiative and launch week.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Protemp?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I, I really don't like to vote on something the same night we workshop it. I think that's really bad policy, no matter what the subject matter is. I think it needs time to talk about it. Second of all, I'm a little concerned, because I'm not sure who wrote the resolve. Was it city council, staff, or the organization? And I think we got to be careful there, because obviously, we want to make sure the statements that are in that are, we are, we made them. So I just want to be a little careful about that. But I am nervous about voting about something in the same night that we worked up it. I think that's just setting the wrong precedence, thank you.
Counselor Hayes?
Well, I guess, do we have that resolve actually in front of us?
Yeah, it's in the packet.
The resolve is in your workshop packet. And in answer to Counselor Titus's question, the re, the resolve was written in conjunction with the city manager's office and people from the organization.
And they're just asking us to, to have a written resolve? For our record?
Yes, and it's also in conjunction with their launch week, which is going on this week. It's, um, if the resolve isn't approved this evening, it still gets the awareness of the program, and it will be effective in two weeks, but it would just be nice to, for them to have that, given it's their launch week. They could not get on the council's agenda any earlier than this meeting, and that's why they're here this evening. That's item number, on page seven.
Now, we pass this, are we going to get a printout, we all sign it? Is, is that basically, is one of those things? No? Anybody for or against? Counselor Lasagna?
I'm, I'm for it, because I think it's important to do this during this week that is the launch week for the, for the program. There's a lot of energy around this, and I think we want to support that.
I agree with Counselor Lasagna, I think we need to support it. It's something that's very true to their hearts, and, and I think there'll be a lot more people to join them if we get behind them and, and become part of that force.
Counselor Hayes?
No, I think I was agreeing with Counselor Titus that sometimes it's against our rules really to put an item on the agenda, but reading it through, I'll certainly vote for it.
So, it's not an item that actually commits us to any money, or.
No, it's just a resolve.
Counselor Fornia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor Protemp. Page seven is a resolve of people, if you wish, I could read it, if you don't have it before you. May I?
If you'd like to read it, I will entertain you to read it.
Thank you, I'll try to do my best reading, just don't give me a grade. A resolution of recognition for the Green Dot L.A. Initiative and Launch Week, whereas the city of Auburn herein after the city has a demonstrated commitment to keeping this a safe and tolerant community, and whereas the city endeavors to find and recognize new means of promoting such safety and tolerance, especially those which can work in tandem with municipal public safety efforts, and whereas the city recognizes and values the work of Green Dot L.A. in teaching bystanders how to recognize the signs of harassment and violence, and then to safely and effectively respond so as to make these hateful or hurtful words and behaviors less common, thus helping lessen threats and violent behaviors throughout the community. And whereas the city desires to recognize and commend the Green Dot L.A. launch week of March 5th to 9th, 2018, as marking an important community-wide start to extensive and free Green Dot bystander training to businesses, organizations, citizens throughout the Auburn and Lewiston, throughout Auburn and Lewiston. And whereas the city understands that the Green Dot approach believes that no one can or should do everything, but if everyone does something, even something small, it adds up to a safer and more tolerant community. And now therefore, let us be resolved that the city takes the time to recognize and honor the work of Green Dot L.A. and its 46 certified instructors in sharing what they have learned with their own and other organizations, neighborhoods, families, and friends as they work to spread, spread safe, effective bystander training all across the Twin Cities community. Let it further be resolved that the city hereby recognizes and commends the Green Dot L.A. launch week, March 5th through 9th, 2018, as a worthy and beneficial endeavor.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protemp. I think this is. At this point in time, with all the things that have happened across the country, across the world. this is, it's more important now that we take a, bring something like this forward, something positive, to show all, all Auburn residents of all ages, and even the state or anybody, that we care and that we too would like to see more done to get involved, to make a place, we live in a better place. And I would like to see our city staff take a cop, uh, print this out maybe a little bit bigger. And if any counselor would like to sign this, that we could sign it. It could be left in the city manager's office, we could sign it, and then present it or give it to this group for their, for their endeavor. They need to be recognized for this because, like I said, we need this, we, we need something positive, and I'm even more worried than normal, it feels like, but anyways, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Walker?
I'm all set, sir.
All set, okay. Ready to vote? We all remember what we're voting on.
Been one of those nights.
All those in favor? Seven, zero. And then, could the good city clerk print that out so we could all that wish to sign it? I think that brings us down. My computer's kind of gone dead. Mayor's report, I hope it's in the, in the packet? I don't have any, I don't have a mayor's report to give. A councilor's report. I, I don't have any, I, only to thank my fellow councilors for putting up with me tonight and being supportive. Thank you very much. It's not a place that I usually sit, but I'm glad to have the opportunity. So we'll go over to word one. Do you have any things to report, Councilor?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I want to say that the Edward Little High School visioning session, Vision 2030 is going to take place tomorrow night at five-thirty at the high school. They had a Vision 2020, and this is a discussion to begin to update that vision for education in our community. Also on Wednesday, the Lake Auburn Neighborhood Meeting will be at six P.M. at the West Auburn Congregational Church Vestry, and I will hopefully be attending both of those. And the Edward Little High School Building Committee was, has been rescheduled to Tuesday, March twentieth, at six-thirty here at City Hall. At five-thirty will be the committee meetings on the building committee. Thank you.
Councilor Hayes?
I did attend the AVCOG meeting last week, and I did send forth to staff as well as to councilors a couple of items that had some end dates, actually this week, with respect to a couple of projects. The, there is an issue with, I guess it's the Northern Border, Border Regional Commission, through which I understand some money for, actually New Auburn came for the Greenway Project, which is in some jeopardy because of chairmanship, but I think that information's with staff now. There was the information with respect to the Household Hazardous Waste Program, which is upcoming again, which, uh, one of the collection points is in Lewiston, so those dates will be forthcoming. I guess I should respond to some extent with respect to the tree cutting around the airport. I agree that, you know, that, that, the timing as far as notice was awkward. I think the, the cutting, which is not just in this area that was referenced, but actually in four locations around the airport, was part of a plan actually that was approved by the board, actually prior to my coming on the board. I think actually Tina was on the board at the time. And as I understand it, it is part of a plan actually to protect the, the, uh, actually have to remove a canopy because now the, the growth underneath is so shadowed out that they're not getting the new growth underneath, which actually is the true protection for sound and light with more desidious foliage. So the, the plan really is calling for the removal of the bigger pine trees that are over fifty feet with eight-inch or more diameter. And it really is to get the sun down to the ground again to allow the new growth to come out in full foliage, which really does provide the, the sound barrier and, and also visual over time. Unfortunately, it, it's a project that probably should have been done or be done on a more regular basis. So it's been, I think, the years, uh, well, I think it was referenced, two thousand three, two thousand four, that it was last done, so it's been fourteen years. So there's been a lot of, you know, growth in height, but not in foliage where it's really needed. So it is unfortunate that, you know, really the, the notice is, is, I think, the biggest issue. I think, you know, there is, can be some accommodations for some, actually planning of what's needed in, in the low foliage. So that probably is going to be an issue that can be discussed at our next meeting, which will be at this point, be the first Thursday in, in April.
A low report.
I have a, an import, report that I'd like to mention that hasn't been mentioned tonight. I got up Saturday morning and I checked the internet, and there was a, all excitement that the Edward Little Girls Basketball Team won double A, and congratulates, congratulations to them. And it was quite a bit of hype and coverage on, on that particular game. And then there was a little bit of a footnote and says, yes, the boys won too. So I thought that was great. I think that girls are overlooked a lot when their accomplishments. And speaking as a dad of two daughters and, and a brother of two sisters, I'm glad to see that women get their recognition when it's due to them. That's all I have to report.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have just three quick items. One is, I'm on the school committee, and the first budget presentation was made last week by Superintendent Grandin. She did an excellent job presenting a budget with an increase, overall increase of two-point-six percent, which is lower than the three percent that the city council's goal was. So I thought that was pretty good, that they could adhere to that, and let's hope we can stick to that as time goes by. Of course, having additional funding from the state did help. The superintendent has said that, sent that report, I'd asked her to send that to everybody, so she has. So if you, if you should have received it, if you didn't, let me know, I'll make sure you get that. And I'll double check to make sure that I don't have additional notes that you may not have that she sent you. So that would be very helpful to look at that, to see where the money is going to be expended. And I just wanted to reiterate one of our goals that I, I spoke about quite a few times at the beginning. And we as a council have every intention to work with the school committee. And we would like to meet with the school committee as often as we can. We like to visit the schools, and we have our own work to do. But our goal is to have a good working relationship between the city council and the school committee. There's only been one meeting that's been scheduled for jointly to discuss the budget. Because of the timing, that's how this has turned out. But that by no means precludes the fact that we still want to meet additionally. In fact, I was asked by the chair, Tom Kendall, to come up with a, a list by asking what people are interested in that can be discussed. That would be common discussion points between council and school committee. And that's the second item. The third one is I want to remind everybody that it was nice the school committee to get all of these out in your mailboxes because this announces that you're, you know, asking all of us to pool together with our resources and think in our thinking caps and talk about Vision 2020 turns into 2030. That's the year 2030. And they would like us to join them for a community forum on March seventh, two thousand eighteen, which is Wednesday, from five-thirty to seven at the E.L.H.S. gym. So bring your thinking caps and take a look at what the presentation is all about and weigh in and contribute. Thank you very much.
Councilor Alphornia, I'm sorry, I did, I did, when did Superintendent Grandin sent out those notes? I didn't.
Oh, she, she sent those out last week. Our meeting was Wednesday, so you should have received it by two days after.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let me know if you haven't got it.
Thank you.
But there's a lot to it here.
Councilman Walker?
Thank you. I'd like to start with a question to you. Could I have Eric come up, Cousins come up to the table? I have a question to ask him about the forestry rules that we put into place here a few years back.
Hi, we can have him come up.
You can try to answer it for me. Remember we had problems with the cutting on the school property? And then we came up with some, I think fairly good rules on cutting and who they were supposed to notify or how they were supposed to notify people before you start cutting the timber down around property and stuff.
And I, I think they apply to city-owned property.
Only?
I believe so, we can double check that. I haven't reviewed them for this case, but I believe those applied to city-owned property. We have rules in the Lake Auburn and Taylor Pond watersheds, but we really follow the state rules outside of those areas, that, on property that's not city-owned.
Okay, would you check though? I, I, I think.
Double check.
I think it went further than that because when, when you're talking about private property, I know our neighbors across the river, they have rules that you can't cut down certain trees that lean over certain places and stuff. So I'm wondering if we covered that, that's all. It's a.
We can check that.
This is kind of a battle that's been going on for years at the airport. Thank you. Okay, on March seventeenth, the United New Auburn Association and Walton School and Sherwood High School has a challenge going on. It's a chili and chowder challenge. And we would like everyone to show up at Walton School, March seventeenth. It's, the challenge goes on from four to six. And we're, we're kind of reaching out to all of our people that live in the, the area to come on up and do the taste, do the voting, and have a great time. I think the cost is five dollars to come in and taste, and you can taste everybody's chowder and chili. And there is going to be a lot of it, so you won't go away hungry, that's for sure. Thank you.
Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow night, the Age Friendly Committee is meeting at Hasty Army. And it's going to be at five o'clock. It's open to anybody interested that's interested in the community. And we've met twice now, and we seem to have had a good turnout, and everybody's interested. And we could use as much input on what age-friendly means to the individual. And then I've got a question dealing with the airport, and then I have another one for the school. When they were talking about clearcutting or cutting like you had said so that the canopy would grow, do they need to cut it? I mean, are they actually clearcutting it, or are they spot clearing?
Actually, it's not clearcutting, it's selective cutting. So one of the, two of the parameters, the bigger, well, the taller growth are the pine trees, so anything over fifty feet. And also restricted to eight-inch diameter and greater. So that's retaining the shorter growth and also the lesser diameter. The issue is, of course, with that high canopy, having been there now for several years, that lower growth, growth has been suffocated out. So, but it, you know, it needs to be encouraged in each sun. So that's the reason for, so it is selective cutting. Unfortunately, because it's gone so long, the pine trees take over. And that canopy has really suffocated out a lot of the growth that should be there if it had been done on a more timely basis.
Thank you. Now with the school question. If we didn't get the extra state money, how much would this current, I mean, this next school budget projection be for an increase?
We weren't given that information. It was just factored in that we had that, you know, you know, the EPS funding, and it was not factored in as to what it would have been had it not been there. But I can ask that question.
Because it would be interesting to know what their budget would have been, and then how much, I mean, so that we'd have some, some sense of how it's growing if we didn't have this money. I mean, that would help us, at least my idea of where I'd like to see their budget.
I can get that information for you.
Thank you, Councilor. City managers' report?
I'd like to echo the success of your Edward Little teams. One of them played Gorham, which, who's a fantastic team, in Scarborough. And when they're very close contested events, like fifty to forty-nine for the girls, it was an outstanding showing. I also want to thank the police and fire departments for being present to greet them and escort them into town, into the city. And the mayor actually got a front row seat and sat in one of the cruisers, so he was pretty happy to welcome the teams. Congratulations to all of the teams, and let's hope to be able to get them here for their recognition at the council meeting. Part of what we've been doing has been the budget. I know it's, it's not been front and center publicly, but the department heads are to be commended for the work that they've done. And I want to thank Jill Eastman, coming back from leave and, and hitting the ground more than running with the C.I.P. and the budget preparation. We've met with all of the department heads so far, and that's a team of folks consisting of the city manager, Jill, Chris Muma, and myself. We have two more to do, and that should be done by the end of the week. And we're hoping that we have a first cut with the manager's first round of cuts ready and available in the next couple of weeks. So it's been, been quite a, quite an interesting process. The other piece is we've been, we met with a small group of folks to continue the conversations about sports tourism, leaning toward more of the tourism conversation. Stay tuned for more information on that. And again, I would like to thank Liz Allen for all of her work in the Auburn Connections. And I'd like you to take the time to read it because it provides lots of great information about the city and about events and exciting things going on in the city. So that's all I have for this evening.
That brings us down to the second open session. Anybody can, any members of the public can, are invited to speak on any issue directly related to the city business that's not on the agenda. Yes, state your name.
Oakley, Sopers Mill Road. The discussion this evening about the sales of the properties, that all should have been handled in the workshop a week ago. That's what you have workshops for. So when we came here tonight, you should have just been able to go boom, 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 boom. And I understand there's always some changes, but last week when it came up, nobody had any of these questions. And if you'd had those questions then, staff could have come back with some decent answers and talked about how long we've held the properties and all kinds of good questions. So take advantage of the time you have in the workshops because you have it, so you need to do it. And secondly, I hope that the city can purchase a copy of Robert's Rules for each person sitting here, and you all read them so that we don't have this mayhem we had tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ryan Carrier, thirty-two, Constellation Drive again. I've come to beat the dead horse. I appreciate Councilman Hayes' remarks in regards to the situation and the fact that it could have been done better. The growth has actually been out there since nineteen forty-seven. It's when the area, this area down in this area burned, and the pine trees were planted at that point, bringing them back. To give you some kind of an idea of, of what we're looking at, you could drive by the properties there at the Jiguer Building. That was selective cut also. And if you want a much closer look of what I would have left for trees, turn around and. turn around and look at your flagpoles. I'm talking about pine trees that are in two foot in diameter. And I'm talking about birch and scrub oak trees that are in there that are about the size of the flagpoles that you have behind you. So I agree with him that it should have been looked at over the years. But doing it in this manner, the area will eventually grow back in. And I'm sure my grandkids will appreciate it at that point. But I'll be dead and gone long before we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Can I close the second open session? I'm down to an executive session. It's your pleasure. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, per temp, I make a motion that we go into executive, executive session discussing, discussion regarding a personnel matter pursuant to 1 MSRA Section 405, 6A.
Seconded. Moving seconded. All those in favor? Will be an executive session. It may be a while, I don't know. Have a nice evening.